Thank you all for being here today. If you could please stand for the invocation and then pledge allegiance. Lord, we thank you for bringing us here together this Tuesday morning in November. Sometimes it's hard to believe how quickly these years go by. In this month, we are so thankful for what we've been given, for the blessings we have, for the faculty, for the administrators, for the students that we have the privilege to serve at this college. We thank you, Lord, for all of these things. We thank you for being a part of this community. I ask that you would continue to let us reach out and see different ways in which we can connect here. Thank you for the chance we have to change lives each and every day. And we want to thank you again, Lord, today for our veterans, as yesterday was Veterans' Day. Thank you for the service that they provide to this country and for the freedoms that they allow us to have. It's in your wonderful name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just as a quick announcement this morning, there is an overflow seating directly down the hallway in room 230. If anyone would like to watch the Board of Trustees meeting over there, they're more than welcome to. With that, we'll move to comments this morning, starting with me. It's been a busy couple of months. I unfortunately missed last month's meeting, so thank you to Ms. Cole for taking the reins there. But I was actually in Kansas City for a city and Chamber of Commerce through the City of St. Petersburg trip with 48 other people from the City of St. Petersburg, business leaders, community leaders, some city council members, and our mayor. And it was a great opportunity to get outside of St. Petersburg, learn a little bit about what Kansas City is doing, both well and some things that they've learned from that they have not done so well. And it's great to be able to brainstorm with some other leaders in our area as to how this college can be more effective in the grand scheme of things as well as we learn how to grow into the next 10, 15, 20 years from now. So it was a very productive trip, and I was glad I was able to go on that. In addition, I traveled with Ms. Cole and Dr. Williams and Mr. Gibbons to New York City a few weeks ago. I was just telling Katie, it seems like it was months ago already, for the Association of Community College Trustees Convention that was in the city. It was a privilege to go to that, to meet some other trustees from all over the United States, and to hear and discuss things that are affecting community college in this nation. A common theme, of course, was student success and how can we be better, but also retention, which is something, of course, we talk about here all the time. It was encouraging to hear that a lot of the things we're dealing with are being dealt with, with colleges everywhere, but that also a lot of the creative and new ideas that were discussed have already been put in place here and implemented in one way, shape, or form. So I think we are headed in the right direction. We have fantastic leadership to continue pushing us in that direction, and I'm excited to see where we go in the next few years. And it was a nice reminder that we are at the forefront of a lot of these new schools of thought as it comes to community colleges. And then finally, I had the privilege to go to a SPC alumni event, because I am alumni. I wasn't just sneaking in because I was the chairman of the board. And it was hosted by Great Bay Distributors, which is in St. Petersburg. And it was a fantastic event. We probably had, I don't know, 75, maybe 100 people throughout the night there. It was a great time to get together with St. Pete alumni, young and old, and that's something I hope we can continue to build, because it's something that we need to take seriously here, is encouraging our alumni to invest back in this college, to have them understand what an important piece of this community, the college, is, and to treat this alumni association like they would the university that they may have attended after that. So hopefully, we can continue to build on that, but it was great to be there, and I was very happy to attend. And with that, I will move to any other board members with their comments. None this morning? President?
All right, it's my turn. All right. I want to echo the chair's comments about Veterans' Day and thank all of the faculty and staff, other employees and students who are veterans, who have served for our liberty and for us to be able to live the lives that we live. And so, we don't take it lightly, and we very much appreciate and value you. We have also had a very busy time since the last board meeting. We had Discovery Day, which was a lot of fun, from what I've heard from others, that they had a great time, where it's an opportunity for us to rejuvenate, sort of rebuild, learn a little bit more, and strategize on what we're going to do going forward as an institution. And so, it gives employees an opportunity to mix together and spend time and learn from each other, and so we had a good time there. We tried something new this year, although we tried it short-term at the last minute, was to have a Spirit Week, where we have fun at SPC and we bring back our alumni and our students, faculty, and staff get together. Each campus had their own spin on that. I think Tarpon had a king and a queen, which was pretty cool. I hope next year I can go see that. So that was really nice. We had a big Spirit Day at the gym, and we had a car show, and wear your SPC pride, show your pride, and a lot of different things that we, that I thought was very good to keep us moving and going forward. We had Moving the Needle last week, which is a national conference that the college hosts each year. Dr. Renard and his team was very busy, but it turned out to be wonderful. So thank you to all who was involved there. I saw a lot of the tweets and a lot of Facebook posts and pictures and fun, but also learning, where people were saying they're coming back next year and they're bringing someone with them. The speakers were great, not because I was one of them, but... That, I'm not saying that for me. But I think everybody else just did a fantastic job, and I was very, very proud of that. Something I'm real proud of that happened last week as well, our CSEC team presented at the Florida College System Conference. And this was their first presentation. They wrote it themselves, they put it together, and they presented. And I'm just very proud of them for the work they're doing and really showing leadership and getting out there, so I was real pleased with that. Our Model UN team, again, represented Rwanda and won the Distinguished Delegation Award amongst some other awards as well, so very pleased with that. And we just started our op-ed series. We had an op-ed in the paper on Sunday that talked about the educational ecosystem and how Pinellas County Schools, St. Pete College, and USF need to work together to meet the needs of our workforce and work collaboratively to make sure that all of our residents have education and access to education. So the plan there is to have more of those every other month or every three months to have an op-ed from St. Petersburg College. And this week, we will have our Women on the Way celebration with our donors on Friday at 9:30 at Seminole. So if you're available and can come, please join us there. And that's all I have for my report today.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And that reminds me, if I can go back for one second, I wanted to thank, talking about Spirit Day and all these other things that are happening at the campuses, and didn't the Lakewood High School band play at one of them?
Yes, they did.
Which is pretty awesome. But I wanted to thank whoever runs the Twitter feed for SPC. That's how I stay engaged a lot of the times. They do a great job. This is, a lot of the information I get, aside from other sources, comes from Twitter, and it's fantastic. I always get caught up on everything, so thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I'm sorry, I skipped, but I did want to acknowledge something.
Sure.
Last month, the math department hosted a math fusion event on a few campuses, and one of our colleagues from the law firm participated in the Seminole Math Fusion Event. And she came back just so excited about the fact that the math department was doing something so innovative, and not only that, how many students were there and participated. She was shocked. She said, "Katie, there were probably 75 or 100 students that were there. We had such a great discussion about how math can be applied in a variety of fields." And she specifically spoke about how, as a litigator at a law firm doing legal work, she uses math in a variety of ways. And so, it was a really interesting event. So kudos to the math department for putting together a very interesting, applicable type of event, so.
That's right. Thank you.
Wow, good job.
We will move to public comments. We do have one today, so at this time, I'd like to invite up Ms. Angela Taylor-Sweet to the podium. And Angela, you will have three minutes up here, and we thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What an opportunity. First, I'd just like to give honor to the God of heaven, who is he who brings peace upon the earth. Giving honor to Dr. Williams and also the Board of Trustees and my colleagues. Certainly, I'm so happy to be home again. I'm here with the Unified Workforce Development Institute, and I'm here to invite you to join workforce movement. Yeah, there's a workforce movement in America, as commissioned by our Commander in Chief, to revolutionize the workforce development institute, the workforce development system for the 21st century. And so, with the Unified Workforce Development Institute, we're here to, we seek, we seek an opportunity to apply technological disruption theory to sustainable educational strategies. And that would actually challenge moral, challenge moral, actually, to challenge moral, morality of students, also to inspire creativity, also to engage problem-solving strategies and develop skills that would compete with the digital economy. And the way we would do this is to transform and redefine tertiary education. And as you know, tertiary education is an archaic term. Another name for it is higher ed, adult ed, or post-secondary education. So transforming and redefining tertiary education is a necessity to compete in this digital economy. So I'm here to just encourage you, that I do have a proposal I'd like to present to you, Unified Workforce Development Institute, AKA UWDI, that would provide a program or a system in which we can actually meet, meet the expectation of the digital world, of digital economy, to bring our community, not just Florida, but our nation, to a place where everyone would have equal opportunity to climb the ladder of success equitably, without consequences. Thank you.
Wow, that was exactly three minutes. Not sure how that's possible. Ms. Sweet, thank you so much for being here, being back here, and I imagine we have your contact information to get back with you as it stands with your proposal. So thank you for your time. We'll move on to review and approval of last month's minutes from the October 16, 2018 meeting.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So move. Thank you. And we'll move to monthly reports. Ms. Gardner, do we have anything today?
Good morning. I do not.
Thank you very much. And with that, if I could please invite up Mr. Leopold. Yes, sir. Hold on one sec.
I'm talking about one thing, Ms. Gardner. Although, I forgot what it was, though. We talked about one issue.
There is something on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda?
Would you like me to?
Yeah, would you please?
Certainly. This is a modification of the president's contract. It's a small modification, basically in the section of the contract that talks about benefits, it takes out the reference to 457B for deferred compensation, which would allow the college and the HR department to work with the president to provide a plan that works for her and her family. So there's no other changes to the contract, other than to remove the reference to the certain type of plan.
Right.
Ms. Gardner, does that give Dr. Williams any increase in pay?
Absolutely not.
Okay, good. I just want that to be on the record, so that everybody knows. I don't want people running around thinking that we changed our contract to increase our salary in any way, shape, or form.
We have clarification. Thank you, Ms. Gardner, and we will vote on that as it comes up in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to invite up Mr. Leopold, Mr. Moriarty, and Dr. Ulrich, if I could. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for having us. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, President Williams, members of the board. I'm Dr. Shannon Ulrich. I'm back. I was here last month. This time, I'm talking about the learning experience, though. Here with Dean Leopold and Professor Moriarty, he is going to be joining us towards the end, and we're here to give you an update on behalf of the Learning Experience Team. In the fall of 2017, a committee consisting of faculty from all disciplines, campuses, and roles were asked to explore the values of successful learning at SPC from the perspective of the faculty, the student, and college resources. At our inaugural meeting, the initiative's name was changed from the classroom experience to the learning experience, to prevent perceived exclusion of online courses. And the value proposition was created at that meeting. Our SPC Learning Experience Value Proposition states, "The learning experience encompasses a collaborative and supportive environment where clear expectations for students and faculty are communicated, mutual ownership of the learning process is cultivated, and purposeful reflection and commitment to scholarship is fostered with academic excellence as the ultimate goal." If you remember, at this same time, we were also working on the Three-Year Strategic Impact Plan. Since we want to cultivate mutual ownership of the learning experience, we decided to start our dive into this endeavor by taking a look at what our students had to say. Conveniently, the Strategic Impact Plan survey asked students, "In what ways can SPC deepen its commitment to academic excellence?" We took the over 200 responses and categorized them based on themes. What we found was around 45% of the responses centered around maintaining a commitment to quality faculty and having respect, empathy, and sensitivity. We also found that around 12% of the responses fell into what I called the "I love SPC" bucket. Those responses included things like, "SPC's doing a great job, don't change," "We love the faculty," and, in fact, one of the comments was, "I love SPC." And that is why I use that as the name of that bucket, because as a scientist, I like concise but descriptive titles. In addition, we also collected some informal data in a Titan Quick Poll. If you're unaware, the Titan Quick Polls are housed in my courses. Most of the time, they are fun and entertaining for the students, but every now and again, we get a little sneaky, and we put in something a bit more serious. In this particular poll, we asked students how they like to be communicated with when they are struggling. The responses indicated a majority of our students prefer an email communication. Although we did have a large number, nearly 25%, that indicated that they prefer a Spark communication. Before we move on, let me give you a quick description of Spark. Spark is an interactive widget located on a course homepage in my courses. For faculty, the Spark tools allow us to quickly identify struggling students by setting criteria of where we deem a student should be at any point in the semester. For example, in my online microbiology course, I can look to see when the students last logged in, or I can quickly sort my students' grades, my students' based on the grades that they have in the course. Integrated into the tool is a function that allows faculty to quickly reach out to identified students via text or email. Remember this piece, because we're going to come back to it in a few slides. In the spring of 2018, we hosted another Learning Experience Committee meeting. At this meeting, we had a focused discussion on engaging students at the forefront of the course with the syllabus. We discussed best practices and recommended inclusion of explicit expectations of students and, correspondingly, expectations students could have of the professor in our syllabi. In March and April, Dean Leopold, Heather Robertson, Dr. Cooper, and myself made rounds to the campuses to get faculty input. We specifically asked, "What are reasonable expectations of our students and what are reasonable expectations students can have of us, the faculty?" At the six Learning Experience Input Sessions, we recorded over 350 ideas and suggestions. Those responses were compiled and sorted. When asked, "What are the reasonable expectations of our students?", almost three-fourths of the responses fell into the following categories: care and try, have some my courses' knowledge, communicate, read the syllabus, and professionalism. What was interesting is, at the very first Learning Experience Input Session, one of our faculty, when asked the question, "What is a reasonable expectation of students?", kind of huffed a little bit and said, "Just try. That's all we ask for. We have tons of resources. We can help our students succeed. We just need them to try." And what was interesting is, we heard that at a lot of the different learning experiences at all the different campuses. When asked, "What are reasonable expectations for our students to have of us?", 75% of the responses fell into the following categories: create a welcoming atmosphere, providing timely feedback, exhibiting flexibility, professionalism, and availability. We took this information and provided recommendations and goals to set the foundation of the learning experience. Our foundational goals include: providing a robust and thoughtful syllabus that has clear expectations of both the faculty and student, ensuring students know where they stand within a course throughout the semester, increasing course success rates by 2%, and developing proactive outreach practices for struggling students. These goals can be found in the Strategic Impact Plan, and most are slated to either start or have started this fall or start spring of 2019. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Dean Leopold, and he's going to take us through some baseline data and some action steps for each goal.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Williams, Board Chair, Board Members. I am Dean Joe Leopold of Communications. So this next slide and these several slides, oh, sorry, will, will provide some detail and explanation about how those goals will be met. I'll move through rather quickly. The first one involves a syllabus. Now, this is already a current practice, but we can, want to continue making the syllabus available to students three days prior to the beginning of class, regardless of the modality or the session type or length. If faculty are not posting their syllabi, deans and chairs who manage faculty will be able to pull a report, given to us by OLS, and then have a conversation with those faculty about why the syllabi are not there. Secondly, we want to make sure that each syllabus has clear expectations and responsibilities, those for the students and those for the faculty members, the responsibilities of students as regards to grading, and that they are clearly stated. We know that SEDAL will provide support and training for faculty. The second piece involves a grade book, which is really a communication tool for students and for faculty to give feedback to students on their work. Again, if faculty are not using their grade book on the timeframes that we have here, and so if it's a 16-week course, we want to see faculty having grades in the grade book every two weeks. If it is an eight-week, 10-week, or 12-week course, grades should be weekly, so that students know exactly where they are in the course. If faculty are not having their grade books loaded at these times, or that they're not keeping up with them, then again, OLS will provide reports for the deans and program administrators to have conversations with faculty, whether they're full-time or adjunct. Again, SEDAL will provide support and training for that. The next slide speaks to the goals of making sure that we stem the tide of withdrawals and that we increase our student success rate. So you can see the table on left-hand side, through Week 10 of the semester, we're down 10.8% in the number of withdrawals over last fall, which is outstanding, given that we had Irma last fall and all the challenges our students had. Our success rates, though, for the last three years, even though our goal is 2%, we've been up 1.1% the last three years. We believe that, given the challenges that we've, that we've met with the learning experience and the faculty involvement and the changes we're going to make, that we can meet the 2%. So we believe that number will improve. Yes? Yes?
On the withdrawals, not that we need to get into it, but did you all drill further into the reason for the withdrawal?
We do. We ask students when they, at the time that they withdraw, the reasons for that. And typically, the number one or two are work schedules, personal. Faculty instructor issues are the lowest at the end there.
Since we're there, I have one question about this slide as well. When we look at the 10.8% decrease between last year and this year, what was the total amount of enrolled students per year? I mean, was it about the same fall of '17 versus fall of '18?
It was close to it. Dewan, what are we, we were 1% or 2%?
Like 1, 2% down.
Okay. I was just trying to get the total student enrollment number as a reference to what the withdrawals are.
Mr. Chair, since you already interrupted.
Actually, Ms. Cole interrupted.
Ms. Cole, and you were, you know, I, so, Dean, back to the slide that you were talking about where the instructors have to post the grades?
Yes, sir.
What is the mechanism for appeal, and if they don't do it, what happens? What process starts to happen if they don't follow this particular?
The deans reach out to the faculty directly to discuss with them, "Why is the syllabus not posted? Why are the grades not posted?" And that begins the conversation. Because in some cases, faculty, you know, may post more regularly than that within a given week, or they may have a little bit longer, given some assignments that will come in. But the goal is to make sure that in those 16-week classes, which are the bulk of the classes that we teach at the college, whether they're online or face-to-face, students know every week to two weeks, two weeks, no more than two weeks, where they stand in that course.
So, I appreciate us trying to get this accomplished, to make sure the student knows where they are in the course, but yet again, if I don't follow certain standards or rules that are set in my particular position or anybody else's position, then it goes on your evaluation.
Yes.
There's a process that starts to happen.
Yes.
While I like this, but we need to have a process that happens, so that the student is guaranteed that they're getting what they're supposed to get, and then the person that's supposed to do it knows why they're supposed to do it. And then there are, don't just put processes in place, just be putting them in place. I just want to see us be, if we're going to put something in place, let's have a rhyme, a reason. I understand the rhyme and the reason, which is, you want the student to know where they are through the whole course, but then on the backside, there has to be something to hold them accountable for doing.
Again, the lack of a syllabus or grade input begins the conversation between the dean and the faculty member about why that's not there.
And Dean Leopold, I appreciate that, but I can tell you, I have been in the middle of some of these processes, and the dean calling some of these faculty, just that doesn't, you know, that's not a process for me. That doesn't, that doesn't mean that they're going to actually go do it.
No, but it does become a point on their evaluation at the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's several slides later on.
And Trustee Gibbons, too. We don't, this is baseline, so we don't even have the measurements in place yet. We're hoping to have those rolled out for spring to be able to then look at who's doing the grade book updating. So we don't even know how many faculty are not doing this, so it could be a high percentage are already doing this. So it might be a very low number of faculty, and just having those conversations could increase that number, too. Hopefully, ideally, 100%.
So we have no baseline data whatsoever?
That's, yes, that's what we're working on.
No.
That's why we're doing this.
So that we can start measuring.
This is why.
That's all of what these are.
This is the why. I, I think that where we are headed and what we're doing is right on point, and that's why the faculty are here to share that, and that the deans will work with their faculty to say, "Okay, you're missing in this. You're not doing well." Online services will help us track that, which we had not tracked in the past, and so we're in the right, we're in the right direction.
I, I agree with you, Dr. Williams, but I'd like to hold people accountable for things that they don't do. And I'm saying that the folks that don't follow the process, how are we holding them accountable? Except for the deans calling, and that's okay. You don't, we don't have that answer today. That's, that's the answer.
Let's roll through the rest of the presentation. I think some of these answers are going to come a little later, and then if we have questions, we'll ask them at the end.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
So back to withdrawals. Again, our goal is 2%. We know we were 1.1 over three years. We're going to improve upon that. These are our goals. I wanted to pull out, we wanted to pull out some data and disaggregate it from the overall. Remember now, for the year, for '17, '18, overall, we were 79.7 on our success rate. You can see black and African-American males, we've dipped a bit. Black and African-American females have risen, so they're at 2% of where they were three years ago. Again, we know that we can continue to improve on that. With our Hispanic and Latino populations, we know, we see the With our Hispanic and Latino populations, we know, we see the same trend in males. Uh, although the success rates are higher, it's up, uh, goes up and then down, and then the three-year trend for females is slightly different than the three-year, three-year trend for black and African-American females. That has declined slightly from a high point in fifteen, sixteen. The next slide speaks a little bit to some of the questions that, uh, Board Member Gibbons had. So, it is also incumbent upon faculty and their, their chairs to participate in making sure that there's good reflection at the end of the year or throughout the year, particularly as relates to the SSI, the Student Survey of Instruction, and Faculty One Eighty Measures, so that they comport with the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, the CSE outcomes that we are judged on nationally. Uh, to this point, just several weeks ago, we had an SSI review committee to make sure that what we're asking students about ourselves is what other colleges and other institutions are asking about us as well, so that they do align and match. We also want to have proactive outreach. We want to make sure that when we see students who are unengaged in the first week or two, that that is, they've not logged in, they've not completed assignments, they've not emailed back, they've not responded to a spark, that we have a plan to meet their need. Uh, again, it can include the Spark use, and it can also include SEDAL providing support and training for faculty who are not familiar with some of the dashboard tools that are available to, available to them in my courses. That can, oop, I think I have one more. And this is the Spark. Okay. So, uh, to that point on the Spark, uh, at this point, as of October twenty-sixth, we had two hundred and ninety-four faculty using Spark or the messaging system. You can see for spring twenty-eighteen, we had three hundred and thirty-nine faculty. Summer, it was two hundred and seventy-three. The, the graph to the right is an, an in-house study that we'd done of faculty who used Spark, uh, but had not used it the previous years. You can see that, in blue, their success rates for the first semester were close to nine percent, and their withdrawal rates were down to four percent. But then in the second semester, those same faculty had success rates that were up to eleven percent, and they had reduced the number of withdrawals by one percent. These are hopeful measures. It's all baseline. We recognize going forward, we've got a lot of work to do with students, but we feel encouraged by much of the participation we've received at the learning experience meetings and the update sessions. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Professor Moriarty to tell us a little bit more about SEDAL's role.
Good morning, Board. Uh, Stare Stone Cypher, President Williams. Uh, I want to, I'm here to talk about the, uh, the, extol the virtues of the Center for Excellence in Teaching and Learning here at St. Petersburg College. We have so many tremendous opportunities for faculty here to engage, uh, with these important goals that we're talking about, uh, in this session. So, uh, with the syllabus and grade book, we're, have lots of sessions to, for help the instructors provide feedback to their students, uh, to create a, a, a good syllabus, to, uh, make all of the opportunities, our jamborees, course fits, and online engagement in, in regards with, uh, the OLS, to best, uh, support them and their efforts to, uh, make an even better, uh, online and in-the-class engagement system. With the Ws and student success rates, uh, we're going to be speaking about, uh, how to speak to your students about these very issues, what, uh, those, as Dean Leopold discussed, those issues that they are facing in their lives to help start this communication, with our upgraded academic integrity policy, to, uh, make sure that everything's good there, and to evaluate ourselves, to make sure that we are teaching effectively. Uh, something that I'm most particularly proud of is our reflection and outreach efforts, particularly with mental health awareness. We are providing training to, uh, support the instructors on how to interact with their students on their, any mental health i- issues that might have, and all of the important, uh, work that goes on with that. So, something that I encourage all of you to do is, we have a tremendous amount of opportunities here at SEDAL. Uh, so if you have the opportunity to log into sedal.sbcollge.edu, and we'd be happy to show you all the good stuff that we're doing.
Great.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have one. Going back to the slide, faculty who use Spark, is there a reasonable explanation for why it's declining every semester?
Well, summer is, we're, we have fewer faculty working in summer. Uh, this semester, that was only through October, and we had just begun to hit the W period. Um, I don't have a great explanation as to why the number is lower, but we've had several weeks now, and it may be when we go back in to look that there are more faculty using Spark. The other, the other thing I would offer is that we offer a good number of eight-week session courses that began just shortly before that period of time. So when we take all of that into account, the number of faculty using Spark may be much higher.
We're tracking to be around that number.
Is it optional?
The sparking? Is it optional? Yes. And we're trying to, as part of this initiative, we're trying to encourage faculty to use the Spark tools and reach out. That's part of the communication plan that we want everyone to develop. If you see a student that, you know, is not engaged in the online setting, send them a Spark, which is a text message. Some of them will respond quicker to the text message than perhaps the email.
And I should say, Board Member, uh, that we also email students a lot. There are faculty who prefer using emails through my courses more regularly than perhaps a Spark. Not that they don't use Sparks. And in fact, Spark has changed in the last year or so, so that you can have a positive note to a student as well, saying, "You're doing great in the course. Keep up the good work." But we do not have the number on the emails with us today.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Ulrich, going back to the slide, um, where we talked about faculty expectations of students, what, can you elaborate a little more on the, the largest percentage, which was care and try? Is that just, was it general like that, or were there specific things that faculty talked about that we kind of lumped into that category?
Um, it was, well, that was a very general category. A lot of them use the term care and try, uh, but there was more specific examples, um, with that, try to, try to do the assignment on time, and if you can't communicate, it kind of stems out into some of the other things that we, we collected. But the communication piece, um, just coming to class was part of the care and try. I would like to see a student come to class and just exhibit that they're interested in the course.
That's right.
Make eye contact with me every now and again was some that we heard. Um, act like you're writing down some notes and not just playing on your computer or your phone when you're in class. Those were all kind of lumped in that bucket of care and try.
Okay. I was just curious, it was a large percentage?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to call up Ms. Henning. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Stone Cypher, Board of Trustee members, President Williams, college family. My name is Andrea Henning, and I'm here to give a progress update on the Workforce Institute. You know, when you turn on the news, when you listen to employers, there's this recurring theme, "We need workforce, 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 workforce. We need workforce." Yes? And the good news is that St. Petersburg College has the solution. It's the Workforce Institute. It's like a smaller college within a larger college, and the Workforce Institute provides workforce continuing education, industry certification programs that feed to and from our academic programs. And they're in all of the industry sectors, such as health, technology, business, manufacturing. And, uh, our students are able to complete their programs within three months or less, so it's very accelerated. Our instructors work in the industry. They're industry experts, so that, they bring that real-life, relevant experience to the classrooms for our students. And our students, uh, they're able to earn credentials for their entire lifespan. They keep coming back. So, uh, it, it, it's good work that we're doing. I want to share that with you. You know, um, about eighteen months ago, I was asked to lead the Workforce Institute. I've been with the college family now for fourteen years, leading the collaborative labs. And there are many synergies. Both entities are business-facing, and the collaborative labs, of course, uh, serves the strategic solutions for businesses, and the Workforce Institute facilitates, uh, industry training for businesses. So we've had a lot of synergies between the two departments. And last year, the two themes were transition and growth. We've had a lot of both. And I'd like to share with you some of the key wins from last year. Uh, we have increased enrollment, and we've also reduced the deficit. So in terms of increasing enrollment, uh, I would say that the, the key driver of that is that we're offering more of the right programs. We looked at the previous year. We analyzed fiscal year seventeen, and there were eleven hundred programs that were offered to an average class size of three. So we looked and we said, "Wow, we've got to scrub this list. We need to listen to the industry experts. We need to listen to our employers and refine the list to offer what they need." And so this past year, we offered, uh, less than half of the programs. We refined it down to five hundred and fifty classes, but the average class size was eight students. So we're starting to really get the sweet spot of what do the industry, uh, needs, uh, request, and what are the employers requesting, what are our students needing? And then as we look at, and we're going to continue that effort, to really refine our course offerings to, to offer the right programs. The reduced deficit, I would say the key driver, uh, of reducing our deficit by thirty percent has been that we really strategically realigned our staff. We looked at the industry sectors and we said, "Let's build entrepreneurial teams to address each industry sector." So we got efficient with our staff, and we said, "Okay, let's, let's have an allied help entrepreneurial team. Let's have a technology team, a business team, a manufacturing team." And, uh, those teams are really keeping their ears and their hands on the, on the pulse of the industries. They're staying close, so that we can not only react, but we can be proactive in terms of what's needed. And I'd say that was a key driver. We were able to reduce, um, the personnel costs last year by a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars with some strategic realignment, and, uh, we had a modest increase in our revenue. And I would say that we are really poised, uh, for continued success in the coming year and beyond. Uh, we anticipate and we project about forty percent increase in our enrollment over the next three years. So if you look at twenty-twenty-one, we're anticipating going from forty-three hundred students to six thousand students. And I'm going to share some of the key, uh, strategic imperatives that we're putting in place to, to drive that. And we're also certainly closing the gap on this deficit and looking to increase our revenues with some of these key initiatives. Um, so, as last year, the two themes were transition and growth. This year, the two themes are growth and impact. Impact on our students, impact on the communities and the employers that we serve. And the three key initiatives we have are to increase community engagement, accelerate new program offerings, and expand the presence of the Workforce Institute. So I'd like to just briefly go through each of these key strategic initiatives. The first is increased community engagement and impact. You know, with collaborative labs, the reason we were successful, I believe, is that we built strong strategic partnerships. We were trusted through the years, and we offered quality programs, and we had, uh, lasting impact. And that's the same type of thing we're doing with our industry leaders now. We're building strong, uh, partnerships. We're looking to write, uh, to offer the right programs and build lasting impact in the lives of our students, so they continue to, uh, get jobs that they need and advance in the careers that they have, and we, we address the workforce needs of, of, uh, our employers. We've had great success this past year in offering business leader convenings at each of our campuses, and we had maybe fifty to a hundred business leaders at each. Not only were the Workforce Institute team members there, but our academic partners, our deans, our provosts, and our faculty were around the table, and these were listening sessions. What do you need in terms of your, uh, immediate workforce needs, future workforce needs? And what can SPC do to partner with you to provide those needs? Highly effective. And we're starting to really, uh, build these educational ecosystems to serve each of our campus needs. And after each convening, we would go to meet with the employers who attended. So that's where we build those strategic partnerships. We'd go to their site. We would build a, um, a workforce solutions plan to address their key needs, and that's been very helpful. We also are strategically engaged. You know, we can't be everywhere, but we're really trying to get, uh, engaged with the right partners. Uh, chambers, with, uh, industry associations, with workforce boards. I serve on the, the, um, Career Source Pinellas Board to stay close to that entity. We do regional initiatives in, in concert with other, uh, out, you know, outputs and outlets. And one of the key, uh, convenings that we're excited about, I've been working with Dr. Furlong and, and Dr. Williams, to convene the mayors. You know, the Mayor's Council of twenty-four mayors that serve all of Pinellas County? And that's happening in February. And we're going to bring together all of our deans, all of our, uh, faculty to address the Mayor's Council. And we're looking to then build those ecosystems, so that each mayor connects to a campus that's closest to them, and we're really in touch with that. And we're looking to, um, identify key ways in which SPC can partner to build economic development and, uh, to offer the right programs. Finally, the, the CRM, uh, many of our SPC departments are working together, those who touch our community, and we're all now using the same platform. So when I go to talk with Valpak, and, uh, when our recruiters go to talk to Valpak, they'll actually see that I was there in the activity that's taking place. So we're working in concert together. So that is something that we're excited about. A second key, uh, strategy is to definitely accelerate the number of programs we're offering the right programs. You can see, these are the business areas that we serve, and we're working not only with our industry experts, but with our academic partners, to ensure that the programs we offer, uh, when it lends itself to it, they articulate into our degree programs. So these are some of the new programs we're going to be offering this year, and, uh, we're excited about these. Just a sampling. A third, uh, key strategic initiative is to expand our presence. When we go to these, uh, employers, they say, "Wow, we didn't know you existed." And so we need to expand the presence, not only in our SPC campuses, but in all the campuses with workforce programs. We are looking to have SPC at employer sites. Right now, I would say probably less than five percent of the workforce programs we offer are on employer sites. And this coming year, we want to have at least twenty, twenty-five percent of the programs that we offer actually be on employer sites. SPC at BayCare, it's happening, starting in January. SPC at, I was just talking with the, the Hyatt, uh, HR manager, and she oversees eight properties. She said, "We want SPC at our properties," at Hyatt. So these are the types of initiatives we're going to be, uh, really focusing on in the coming year. And finally, the, uh, the online, uh, platform that we have partnered with our HR department to expand. It's an enterprise-wide Skillsoft platform that will exponentially, um, increase the number of workforce programs, CEUs, continuing education programs we can offer. So we're really, really excited about that as well. So those are our three key initiatives. Finally, I'd like to share with you, uh, workforce challenges that we're addressing. The first, as I mentioned, we need to raise the awareness of Workforce Institute. Uh, in addition to creating these partnerships, we're looking, uh, to have, you know how we've had success on our homepage with registration, a registration button, so that they can find us and they can register for classes for our academic programs? We're going to have a big registration button, hopefully, for our workforce programs, because it's a little bit difficult for them to navigate and find us. We're going to continue to have full integration with our SPC family. Uh, we don't want workforce to be an afterthought. We want to be right in the mix, the lifeblood of our organization. We definitely need seed money. We're constantly asked to create new programs, and that takes money. And so, uh, we're looking to build, uh, proposals to our foundation and maybe get some, uh, support for seed money for new programs, as well as perhaps corporate partnerships. And finally, nimble processes. You know, when employers call us, they have hours to react, and we have hours to react. We don't have weeks or months. So what we need to do is put in place, kind of like when you go to the theme parks and it's the fast pass to the ride, we need to put a fast pass to offer workforce, uh, solutions to our employers. And so that's what we're working with our college family to be able to do. So thank you so much for the opportunity to give a, a brief update on the Workforce Institute. Are there any questions I can address?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presentation. I just got a couple of questions. What are the emerging industries as we see right now in our county?
You know, we have, uh, we have been looking at, like, in fact, we just went to Oldsmar, and I met with the mayor and the city manager there, and they are like many other cities that we're working with. Uh, they're going to become an innovation district, and they're looking at actually having like autonomous vehicles and artificial intelligence, and this is happening now. So I think that we are already ahead of the curve. We're already developing those programs. They were delighted to hear that we're ready to kind of go to market with those and to be able to assist them. And they actually want to have SPC at Oldsmar. So I would say definitely looking at all of the technology that is emerging, not only in, you know, the technology field, but we're finding it in the healthcare industry, in business industry and finance. We're trying to stay ahead of the curve on that.
So do we look at the state reports and tell us what the emerging industries and jobs are in our county?
We do.
On a regular basis? So what are they?
Absolutely.
I'm asking that question. What are those industries and jobs?
They're definitely in the finance area and we're definitely needing insurance programs. We're bringing those to market. We now have our own insurance programs that we're offering. And we're also going to be offering them in Spanish, so that's a high need. In fact, last year, that was our top program. And we had about two hundred thousand dollars in revenue from that program alone. So I would say, working with our academic partners in the finance area and the business area, that's a key need. Sales training, financial, we're actually bringing to market certified financial planning because we have found that talking with our industries, they need that. Hospitality is another tremendous market for our area. We're working on building our hospitality programs with Alana and our Dean of the College of Business. And definitely technology, healthcare. We're actually working right now with Mayor Christman and with all of the hospitals in the city of St. Pete. And we're working with USF. We're working with Pinellas Technical College to build an allied health ecosystem to serve St. Pete and beyond. So I'd say that's definitely another emerging area.
How many companies do we engage on a monthly basis? Or do you have like a quarter that you try to engage?
We track the numbers of business calls we make. We have a scorecard that we keep. And so we're able to give, you know, kind of, actually, it's every week that my team, we look together and we say, which of the organizations are we touching? What's the return on investment? Where do we need to focus that are, you know, not getting any focus?
So how many do we touch on a monthly basis?
For our businesses, I would say on the average, between fifty and seventy-five businesses, we're out there every day.
How many of those companies do we end up having a contract with of some sort to provide services?
We are working on that. That's the one key thing we are turning our attention to this year. In the past, I would say ninety-five percent of the programs were open enrollment, which means your students come and enroll on their own. Now we're looking at building about twenty-five percent of our focus to be on the businesses and closing those contracts. And it's a work in progress, but we're starting to see some significant growth. I'd say the last month, we have had about ten contracts that we closed. And we're continuing to see that go up because of the emphasis we're placing on it.
And then you talked about a fast pass type program. How many of those programs have we created thus far? And how many are we in the process of creating?
You know, the fast pass was more in the context of, we need to be able to respond to the business needs. And so we need our internal SPC, ways in which we can go and get contracts, ways in which we can resource, ways in which we can get instructors signed up. So that's what I meant by the fast passes.
No, I understand, but have we done any programs that like that already with companies? Have we created any, responded to any company's need for talent? And we have put a program together where we're able to do that very quickly. Have we done that before? Are we engaged in that? Sounds like it's about ten percent of the folks that you engage, you get contracts with. So out of those ten percent, how many of those people are we actually creating a program for?
It's not necessarily ten percent of those we engage in that we get contracts, but I was referencing that ten percent of the programs we're going to offer would be more, actually twenty percent would be more toward the corporate sector instead of open enrollment.
You said you engage fifty companies and about ten of them, right? You get, you're working on contracts with or trying to do something with, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, that's where I'm getting that number from. I'm just trying to figure out.
You bet. Thank you, thank you.
Maybe twenty percent.
Well, we're just now really shining a light on this opportunity. So there's a, there's a kind of a pipeline that has to happen. You have to build that trust with the organizations. And we're really starting to focus on that this year, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Going back to the deficit, when did, when did we start running a deficit? Or has it always been that way? And continuing from that question, is the largest reason because of inefficiencies in some of the things we're offering versus how many people actually sign up to take courses? Or what's the main reason for the deficit?
About eighteen months ago, when I joined the workforce team, we were at about four hundred thousand in deficit. And we had, from what I recall, we had gone through a tremendous expansion in our staffing to serve an expanded need. And so we were definitely in the red in terms of the investment that we poured into our staffing. And so that's why when we started looking at closing the gap there, that's when we got a little bit more efficient on our staffing. So I would say that that's one of the drivers of the deficit. Another is that we have to pay upfront in investments in program seed money before we're really able to reap the rewards of the revenue that comes in from that. So I'd say those two factors are driving that deficit.
So if we're able to find more corporate sponsors and partnerships and other avenues of raising funds for specific programs, that should help a lot.
It will tremendously, yeah.
That's one of the reasons I ask those questions is because we've been running the deficit long before Dr. Williams got here with this problem.
Sure.
And either we're going to get serious about workforce and respond to companies in the county and be, get what they need done, or we need to cut the whole thing. I'm just telling you the truth. That's how I feel about it. We cannot continue to bleed money and we're not responding to the folks that are in the business community. I mean, you're a businessman yourself. I mean, if there's a need and you came to St. Pete College, I'd like to see this fast track program be able to put, be put together, whatever it is, so that we can start to produce the products to go to work. That's what we got to do. That's what we're supposed to be doing. So we're not blaming this young lady on that. I'm just saying that this has been going on for a long time.
This is the direction we need to go in. And I think perhaps the best way forward is more consistent updates to the board so that we can start measuring some of the changes that are taking place in the direction we're going. So maybe we can make a note going forward, every two or three months, we get an update from workforce and where we're headed and what's happening.
Yeah, we also have a serious conversation next month at our, at our meeting.
Collaborative lab.
Collaborative lab to have a real discussion about how we help with the issue. Maybe there's some things that we can do that also could help.
That's a great idea.
But it's just we can't continue to bleed here.
Yeah.
Right, and I appreciate everything and trustee giving you right on point about the business aspect. And you'll be proud to note that the work that Andrea has done, as well as the conversations we've had in further integrating workforce into the college as many of the programs are now starting to be embedded in our degree programs. The other piece is you're right on about going out to the businesses. Andrea had already started that this month, this semester, I'm sorry, in starting to go out and meet with businesses because we were not as connected as we should have been and as we would like to be. And so they have started meeting with businesses. I've been going along to have the discussion to let them know that this is serious for us. So I am expecting us to have more partnerships with businesses where we're going out and meeting their needs. The other piece is quite frankly, it's been very embarrassing as we've had the collaborative labs with different folks in the room who are business owners, who are talking about where are we in the mix or so surprised at what we can offer. And so Andrea has been pushing really hard to get out there and get there. She's taken me to some of those places and I've had a chance to meet with some of the business owners, especially manufacturing and in some other areas that we may not have touched yet. So I'm very proud of the direction and the vision that she has casted for workforce and working with our budget team on how we can integrate them more into the college since their programs are starting to be the foundation of some of the degrees or included in some of the degrees.
I have a question. How much do we charge for sales training?
We're currently building that program. And we're actually going to build it for a company called Sports Facilities Management, Sports Training Management first. And then we're going to roll it out to the, to the public. So that is an example right there of looking for a corporate sponsor who would front load the investment to build that. But we, I would say that it's hard for me to really respond to that, but I can certainly keep you abreast once we finalize that program.
Why are we focusing in on sports first?
They are actually, I don't know if you know Dev Pateek, but he is a key owner and business owner in Clearwater. And he is also a very well-refined instructor. And he has a need for this for his own organization. And so we're actually customizing for him and then we'll roll it out to the larger organizations.
He came to, they came to us, so we're, who we have first.
I would, argue is not the right word, but I would suggest that there's not a company in this town that wouldn't take us up on sales training.
That's true. We've been hearing it at the business leader convenings, absolutely.
That is every company's number one challenge.
That's right.
And they spend thousands and thousands of dollars on it.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that we look at what some of those sales training courses cost and price ourselves appropriately but competitively.
We definitely will, thank you.
There's a huge revenue source available there.
And it's a huge need.
I think that SFA example is a nice example of being responsive. What trustee Givens was asking before about actually developing a program to respond to the business community. So that's wonderful to hear that. I'll be sure to talk to Jason and Dev when I run into them there in our building in downtown Clearwater. I also wanted to ask, as we are integrating the Workforce Institute into the college more, I guess I was unaware of how separate and distinct it was. So I'm happy to hear that now it's part of Dr. Williams' overall bringing kind of everything in-house in our one college theme. With respect to the CRM, putting on my foundation trustee hat, is the CRM that the college uses, and I'm looking at Dr. Williams, not to exclude you, just in case she might be able to answer this better, is this, I know our foundation CRM has been, had its challenges over the years. So that is a key opportunity I see is the Workforce Institute, the foundation and the other programs working together. I did not think they were. And I know that that's something that's on our list from a foundation perspective is purchasing new CRM software. So I would just encourage us to not put our blinders on when we're looking at the foundation software and be sure that there's interaction there. Because being able to go strategically with some of our major employers on behalf of the foundation and the college together. And really, when, I know this week, the foundation's meeting and getting an update with respect to some of its strategic planning needs, I would think the workforce development is a key component of the foundation's strategic plan as well, so.
Absolutely, yeah. We're working with Theresa and our foundation team on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, good question. Specifically, what does St. Pete College at BayCare look like, just as an example?
We're going to offer advanced CMA training, certified medical assisting. And we're doing half of the training on their site and we're doing half of the training at St. Petersburg College. And we're starting with incumbent workers, so those who are already employed by BayCare. And I believe it's at least a twelve-week program intensive. And our team is going to be working with their team and their instructors and our instructors. And we're building a real partnership to be able to offer this. And that is an example of, I would say, fast-track training to meet an employer need.
Now, do they get a certificate from the college or?
They do, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, this is something that I've been talking about since I was mayor. Associating an institute of higher learning, whether it's St. Pete College, USF St. Pete, with a particular business. And organizing or letting a Jabil, a Raymond James, a Tech Data, a WellCare, a Bankers, a BayCare, a Publix to come to us and say, this is our curriculum and market this curriculum. And they can go online and say, if I want to work at Tech Data, I can go to St. Pete College and take this curriculum, come out with a, an associate's or a bachelor's, and I have a job at Tech Data.
Right.
And so hopefully, this is the start of a beautiful relationship. But we need to hit not only the emerging industries, but those that are staples in the community, but go to them and say, what do you need us to teach? Specifically, what do you need? And we can call it in our brochures and online, this is the Publix curriculum. This is the Tech Data curriculum. This is the Jabil. Take these courses and you got a job at the end of the rainbow. And that's, so, yeah.
That's the direction we're in.
It's a good start.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to invite up Ms. Shonofsky with an update on Veteran Services.
Good morning, President Williams, Chair Stone Cypher, and members of the board. My name is Allison Shonofsky and I will be presenting to you on the state of Veteran Services. As many would rightly assume, most of our students are male. And nearly half of them are between the ages of twenty-six and thirty-five. This indicates to us that they have completed one to two successful enlistments prior to enrolling at SPC. Here we have our veterans broken down by ethnicity and by campus. Our ethnic diversity at SPC matches that of the total force ethnic diversity by two percent or less in every category. This tells us that we have an accurate cross-section of those honorably discharged veterans who are available to us for recruitment. As well, we see that a majority of our students attend the Gibbs, Clearwater, Seminole and Tarpon Springs campuses. This is no surprise to us since those four campuses also house our four Veteran Services offices. Our students, right now, in this moment in time, and also in general, face some very unique and specific challenges. Just three months ago, on August the first, the VA began implementation of the Forever GI Bill. These first regulatory provisions have caused some major financial delays in student payments on the side of the VA. This, of course, is very difficult for a student to prepare their budget, assuming they'll be paid one amount and actually being paid a different amount. These challenges are in addition to our normal challenges and scheduling that the VA proposes to our students each semester. So in order to deal with these and get ahead of these issues, we're working with our academic advisors and our faculty in order to remove barriers to enrollment and hopefully achieve the most perfect schedules possible for these students. Outside of school, we have a host of challenges that our students also have. Most commonly, we see PTSD, reintegration issues, and legal needs. In order to get ahead of these challenges, what we're doing as a part of our departmental, excuse me, as a part of our departmental training is actually identifying veterans, organizations, and businesses and counselors who are ready and willing to help our veterans in need. Veteran Services has just entered a revitalization phase. You have the For You, our organizational chart. And what's important to know here is actually the movement that's happened in the recent past. I myself just took this job in July. Our Tarpon Springs campus and our Seminole campus have gone from part-time to full-time positions and have been staffed. Our open student support advisor position at the Clearwater campus has been staffed. And we have added a position of certifying assistant at our Clearwater campus in our central processing site. This position is particularly important to us as it allows us to more quickly and more accurately take care of reporting our student enrollment and our regulatory reporting needs. Oh, as well, sorry. My backfill at the Gibbs campus is now being evaluated. And as soon as we fill that position, we will be at full staff. As a part of our revitalization, we have learned that we have a huge need for our knowledge bases to be superior to that of our colleagues at other institutions, as well as superior to our own prior knowledge bases. To that end, we have instituted Friday trainings of team building and job training every single Friday. This training is constructed while bearing in mind the importance of a team approach to our students' needs, even while we're separated at our four campuses. Just last month, we were also able to send two of our team members to the North Florida FAVES Conference. FAVES stands for Florida Association of Veterans Educational Assistance and is, I'm sorry, educational, forgot. Specialists. And that is our professional organization that people like myself belong to. As a, excuse me, I was done with that one. This training that we're working on each Friday is going to help facilitate one of our largest needs, which is our veterans' retention level. One of the more unique things about veterans as a group is that they're not a group which can be easily marketed to. Instead, they're more of a group that needs to be, excuse me, they're more of a network that needs to be penetrated. So the easiest way to penetrate this network So the easiest way to penetrate this network is to define the expectations of our current students and exceed those expectations that they have. Once we're operating on the level that they expect us to operate on, then they will go forth and spread the word and recruit for us, using what we military jokingly call the E4 Mafia. Also, to aid in our retention, we'll be increasing our presence on Facebook. We'll be continuing to build our on-campus presence through interdepartmental coordination and events. We'll be using our email more wisely and with the attempt to create a team of our students, not just of us. And we'll be directing our Student Veterans Association to go through their own revitalization phase, which will include a higher level of productivity for them. As well, we have already hosted and will continue to host registration events at each one of our campuses during the first week of registration. This is to promote the students' ongoing forward momentum, and it is no coincidence that this will also help SPC receive our tuition payment from the VA more quickly. We're also currently building the content for our new Veteran Services website. Our goal here on this website is to walk the line between enabling the students to self-help and also driving them into our offices where we can help them, and then feed them into other campus services and student clubs, which can help them to fully integrate. We're also going to be showcasing events in order to hopefully get these students integrated fully into the surrounding veteran community. And we'll be promoting our Veteran Services team as a team to build trust between the student and us as a department. At the recommendation of this board, SPC has created a Veterans Advisory Committee. This committee is comprised of key people both inside and outside of SPC, all who have a stake in the success rate of our veterans. Our goal together is to create sort of a network of symbiotic relationships, which can be tapped at will in order to, in order to meet whatever need has been stated at the moment. We have agreed upon quarterly meetings with more if necessary, and we have set two goals for our spring semester. One would be a fun event for SPC veteran staff and students, and another would be a career resource fair. So for a short wrap-up, our increased personnel has allowed us to, excuse me, has set us up to not only meet but exceed our student expectations. All of our programs are approved for both GI Bill and TA payments, and it cannot be valued enough that we have maintained a positive reputation in the veteran community. One of our major focuses right now is our professional development and team approach to our student issues and needs. We are managing the Forever GI Bill implementations proactively, and we're creating a more positive experience for our students here at SPC. This positive experience will be the conduit for which we tap into that veteran network that I mentioned. In the near future, we will be refreshing our Tarpon Springs office. We will be hiring a departmental work-study to help with administrative functions and special projects. We'll be standardizing our event packs so that we can have a quality presentation even when we're last-minute mobilizing to an event. And we'll also be standardizing our welcome emails and orientation packet handouts for our students to ensure quality. As well, we will be looking at the viability of having a mass veterans' orientation. Ready to field any questions you may have?
Any questions from the board?
I got a question. I have one too, Ms. Jen. You're doing a great job, I think, you know, revitalize customer service retention. So the veterans that find us, all of these programs are there to address their needs. Do we want more veterans? I mean, are we out there recruiting, what are we doing, I guess, to recruit veterans to come? I mean, how do we get them to find us? I mean, we've got a large airbase with Coast Guard, we've got Bayboro Coast Guard, we've got McDowell across the pond.
Yes. If I may backpedal on that just a bit, to the movement that's happening in our organizational chart. I don't know if you were able to take notes completely, but there's been one stable person since July. And so right now, we need to build our framework. If I were to go out myself and drive all these people in, and I'm confident I can find them, if I were to drive them into our offices and their first impression of us is negative because we're not completely trained yet.
That's fair.
We're going backwards on our goals.
Very fair, yep. So we anticipate, once we build this framework, having a showcase that we can go out and recruit and say, "This is what we can do for you. You've earned it."
Absolutely. To be fair, I don't know that the active-duty bases are the best place to be recruiting because they have so many different ways to pay for their education. As well, they're up for deployment at any given time, which interrupts their education. Many people don't want to undertake this job of going to school while they're still undertaking that job of meeting the nation's needs. So that's something that I will look at. I'll absolutely experiment with it, see if I'm wrong. I would love to be wrong and find everybody all at one area, but I fear that I'm not. But I will find them. I'm confident in that.
But they also retire from these places as well.
Right. And so the tricky part about the Forever GI Bill and all of the forever, excuse me, all of the GI Bill chapters is that they expire at different times. And so meeting these people before they retire is essential, but you also want to meet them where they're ready to retire at. I'm sure you realize that if somebody grew up in Ohio, many times they want to go back to Ohio, and SPC unfortunately is not going to be enough to keep them away from their parents or loved ones. So it's kind of a tricky line on where to actually find them and how to recruit them, and that's why I rely, I will be relying heavily on that E4 Mafia that I explained. And it will work, and we have other places where they tend to congregate as well.
You've done a good job in a very short time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Givens?
Two things before I ask my question. Mr. Foster, you know, we have more veterans here at St. Pete College than all the USF system, so. And I have been, as Dr. Williams will tell you, with Dr. Law, a very strong advocate when Jeff was here to try to be number one in military terms amongst veterans and how we serve them. And that's difficult without having an ROTC program, so. But I guess my question would be, we have an advisory board, you said?
Yes.
Who, I would like to know who's on that advisory board, and was any board members asked to present any people for the advisory board, so that we could have some folks on the board that may be helpful in representing people, because we talk to people all the time, so.
Right now, that's a part of what we're doing. We've only had two meetings so far, and we're building that network of who exactly needs to be here. So the first round thing is figuring out what exactly are we going to do? Okay, now who are the key players? Bring them in, see if they're willing to give, see what they can give, and that's where we are right now. We're very fresh in this.
One of the things we have not done, Trustee Givens, is that we have not asked the board if they have any recommendations for this committee, this advisory board, so we can come back and get your feedback on that.
Thank you. I have one question as well. So what do we think, we have just over 1,000 veteran students now, I mean, what's the potential? Do we know?
I actually tried to figure that out. That's a really difficult question to answer, again, because we have this age rage in which people are actually eligible to use their GI Bill benefits. Florida is the third most populated with veterans in the nation. Pinellas County has a lot of veterans here. We also have a lot of elderly people here. Finding that number of the primary age ranges in Pinellas County is not a statistic I was able to run by. I did some very rudimentary calculations, and I got to about SPC already maintaining 1.5 to 2.5% of the veterans that are probably eligible to us, but again, this is very rudimentary calculations coming from different reports
Right.
Of these numbers that I'm trying to draw from. So I'm trying to figure that out, but it's really hard.
So the sky's the limit.
Right now, yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Chair Stone Cypher?
Yep.
I just wanted to comment, I think I said this a couple weeks ago, but, you know, when I first joined the board, year and a half ago, two years ago, or a couple months ago, we, the big question was recruitment and retention, and our numbers kept going down. And all three of these presentations this morning are great examples of very specific things that the college is doing to both recruit more students and retain those that we have, and really making changes over the past eight months to say, you know, it's not, let's be very intentional in the students that we're bringing in, while we're open to everyone, there is that sweet spot of students, but these things, so kudos to Dr. Williams and her staff on that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Definitely routine.
We will move to budget and finance next, and Ms. Jeanette Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board Trustees, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
This morning, I will give a report on our October year report. First, looking at our revenue, I am excited to present this morning that our student tuition and fees is at $37.4 million, which is approximately 61% of our budget. If you look at the comparison to the prior year, you see that we are up. This is contributed to two factors. One, we had one additional day this year in our enrollment for spring. The other is that we implemented something called priority registration, and what that was is that students that were completed, about 75% through their pathways, were given a date to register. And this was implemented to change the behaviors of students so that they enroll earlier rather than later. Next, at our state funding, we're at $18.3 million, and our total revenue at $57.8 million, which is almost a little bit over 40% of the budget. Next, looking at our expenditures, our personnel and benefits came in at $36.3 million, our current expense at $9.4. You see here, this is a little bit higher than our prior year, but this is due to some of the implementation and the technology things that we're implementing that will save money at the end of the year. Our capital, $641,000. Our total operating at $46.4 million at a 32.5%, which is about 8% under where we would be in the fiscal year. Looking at our revenue over expense, we're at $11.4 million. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to administrative matters. I'd like to take the Human Resources items A and B as one motion and vote, and then we'll move to the construction presentation.
Some moves, Chair.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion on points A or B under Human Resources? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Some move, thank you. And that brings us to Section 2, Construction.
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Williams. I am Diana Wright. I'm the Acting Associate Vice President for Facilities Planning and Institutional Services, and today I'm here to provide you an update on the Joseph H. Lang Student Success Center construction project, and also I'm here to request three items for approval. The first one is a change order to decrease Phase II GMP by $248,660.30. The second item is for the approval of the 100% construction drawings or documents for Phase III. And then the third item is for the approval of the Phase III guaranteed maximum price So I thought it was really important to come up before the board and just provide you a little background of where we are currently, how the funding came about. As you are all aware, we received, the state actually appropriated funds over a three-year increment, and we were allocated the last three and a half, three and a half million dollars at the end of September. We also, SPC, provided a match of approximately 25% of $5 million, providing us a project funding of $25 million. So far to date, we have completed the demolition and relocations for a total of $1,013,032. And then we've also allocated $19 million towards the construction budget. Under the construction budget, Phase I has been completed to date, and that entailed the underground utilities and parking lot improvements. Phase II is about 70% complete, and that entails the foundation and the structural steel. And finally, today, we are seeking approval for the guaranteed maximum price for the third phase of construction, which entails about 30 different packages, packages such as electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and all the interior finishes. Aside from the funding that is detailed within this slide, we also have about $4,986,968 that is our allocated costs within the project budget for St. Petersburg College to take care of charges outside of the responsibility of the contractor, and those are for furniture, for technology, equipment that we would be installing, and also it includes a 3% owner's contingency of about $570,000. So this is a very, I wanted to show you a simplified project timeline, and just to just let everyone know that we received confirmation from Lima Construction that the project is going to be delivered on time and is also within budget. The substantial completion for the building is scheduled for November 28th, 2019, with final completion scheduled for December 24th of 2019, and this will allow us to open our doors and provide access to students as early as January of 2020. So as I said previously, Lima Construction was allotted a budget of $19 million to finalize construction, and then after vetting the 30 different packages, the GMP for Phase III was set for $13,320,170.92. So to complete this last phase of the project, we are requesting to redistribute savings derived from Phase I and Phase II into Phase III. Considering final accounting was approved by the board in August 21st of 2018 for Phase I construction, we're looking to redistribute savings of $414,471.62 into Phase III. We are also seeking approval to decrease the Phase II GMP by $248,660, $248,660.30. The total savings of $663,131.92 will then be redistributed into Phase III construction budget for the completion of the project. This concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Do we, do we know what, is that for anything in particular for Phase III, adding the savings to that particular phase?
Yes. So we, the GMP is basically made up of bonds, insurances, fees, and also takes a look at the prices for each and every single individual package.
Right.
And so after, we spent quite a bit of time going back and forth just to determine exactly what the cost of those packages were, we determined that we needed, we needed those savings that were already experienced in the first two phases, and it also, we also added a line item for a design builder's contingency within that $13 million.
Okay.
So we do have an owner's contingency?
Yes. So there's, there's, let me just explain two different items. So there's an owner's contingency, and then there's a design builder's contingency. So design builder's contingency is utilized by the design builder in case there are any issues that arrive within the, within the construction, and whether there's any oversights as far as different trades are concerned. The owner's contingency is funding that is allotted and put to the side for any owner-requested items, and there is, within the project budget, there's a line item of $570,000, which is about 3% of the construction budget for the owner's contingency.
So both exist?
Correct.
Right.
What, what, because I remember we spent the first million dollars with Hennessy Construction, right, am I right, about tearing down the existing?
For the demolition and relo-
The demolition, right. Can we have, and I'm asking for the rest of the board, can we have a line-by-line item of everything that's been spent? I would like that. I would like to see what's been spent.
Yes, absolutely.
And then at what date did it brought expenses, and then what's been brought back to the board, because I'm getting a little confused, because some of the numbers are not jiving in my head, but I may be wrong, so that's why I'm asking for the information. But-
But, we had a long discussion about steel, remember that whole deal?
Yeah.
And we went back and forth on this and that. So I would like a line-by-line of what's been spent and what we voted on as a board to spend over the course of the project thus far. If I can get that, that would be great.
Definitely, and that's something that I know that we worked on, just to provide you a timeline of all of the items that were approved by the board, and also giving you an explanation as to what funding has been spent so far.
Well, you were saying, the reason I asked the question is you said that we received $20 million from the state.
Correct.
Right. But the guaranteed maximum price is $19 million for the construction, and then we put the $5 million in, and that's for furniture, and so on, and so on.
Technology.
Technology, all that other stuff.
Right.
So I just want to kind of, I just want to kind of go through and see where we are. And then, why, why the decrease? What, did we save that, that 248,660? Is that a deal? Did we save that in the steel stuff?
Yes. So, for the second phase, after speaking to Lima Construction, they're, they're very confident that those are going to be savings that can attribute, be attributed to Phase III construction.
Okay.
That's cool.
When we save money in Phase I, Phase II, and this is my ignorance with respect to a design bill contract, we have a guaranteed maximum price of $19 million, but it's set up in phases. So if we incur those phases in Phase I and Phase II, why wouldn't the college just presume that we've saved that money and not reallocated it to Phase III? Because if, if it was already set up, Phase I is this much, Phase II is this much independently, and Phase III was estimated to be a specific amount, why are we redistributing back to Phase III, which in essence, it doesn't increase the GMP, I recognize, we're staying at $19 million, but if we had a savings in Phase I and Phase II, why isn't the college keeping that? Why are we reallocating it? And that goes kind of to the chair's question as to-
Where is it going?
Where is it going?
So the cost of the Phase III, the bids, the hard bids were received at the middle of September. And so, when the contractor first puts the GMP, especially for the Phase I and Phase II, because we weren't 100 percent complete as far as the construction documents are concerned, those are, those are estimates, they were pretty good estimates. I mean, they were kind of right in line. So after receiving the hard bids for Phase III for all the different packages, and after scoping out each and every single package, we realized that just for the, for the package portion, it was going to come in at like $10 million, $10, 10, around $10,800. Once we start adding the fees, the bonds, the insurances that are, have to, that make up a GMP, then the total, and we gave the contractor a design builder contingency, then the total came in for $13 million. So, if we weren't have transferred, if we don't transfer the savings from Phase I and Phase II into Phase III, we will not have sufficient funding to complete the Phase III.
Well, my question, the benefit of a design bill contract with a GMP is that you're contracting with the design builder upfront to say, "We're not paying any more than X for each phase, and so if there's a savings," I mean, there would be no benefit for the contractor to have a savings, or for the owner to have a savings, if nobody incurs it, the contractor's saying, "I'm going to get $19 million no matter what." And so, we approved-
To build.
-to build early and buy some product at our risk, right? Because we went ahead and let the funding, before we had the funding, because we were set, we were told, "This is going to result in a savings, and be sure that you come in under the number." So we took that risk, and we did that, now there is a savings, but now we're just putting that back. I mean, on one hand, I don't want to split hairs because we're at $19 million and that was the GMP.
Right.
But on the other hand, yeah, but on the other hand-
The GMP is 25.
Okay.
The GMP is 25.
So, but on the other hand, if we're incurring savings, what, you know, if we incur savings per phase, does the contract say we just move those forward, or? We signed a contract with them as well, though, and so they're- That's, yeah. They're counting on us to make good on what we said we would do, which was that we would spend $19 million on this building with them. So- That's why I'm asking, yeah. Where's their motivation to save us money in Phase I and Phase II if we don't turn around and have the money for Phase III? And we have a contractual obligation as well.
Yeah.
I think it's all going back to one thing, we got to, we have to, I don't, I mean, I looked at some of the contract, not all of it, and I don't think we're operating in a real design bill contract. I think we have, we've been very conservative, which I agree with to some extent, to protect the college, but if you get into a design bill situation, there are certain things that the contractor and the architects and other folks are supposed to do, and there are certain things that we're supposed to do. And I just, I think we changed from a true design bill to something that was hybrid. Let me just say that, okay? And so, we are being safe, as long as we don't go over $25 million, we're not going to get ourselves back into the Biltmore situation, right?
Well, that's, I mean-
So we don't, so we don't, you know, that's why we have that guaranteed maximum price, and we had that hard $19 million for building.
And I guess that, that's one of my questions, is, you know, we come back and we approve change orders to increase the price, and so I'm happy to hear that this Phase III includes contingencies on both the owner and the design bill to avoid that situation. But, on the other hand, I hesitate a little because you have these savings, so you can avoid, I mean, if we come back and get a change order request in middle of next year because Phase III is more, that, that's my concern, when we've incurred these savings and are reallocating them.
I think part of the challenge is also that the, that the project, what is being conducted in phases, right? So for the most part, when we do a design build project, it's just one GMP, right? And so, what we're trying to do is ensure that the project stays under the $19 million, and, and with each phase, the savings that are experienced within each, within each phase, we can have the capacity to utilize all of the funding within the construction budget. I can tell you with certainty, we have looked at every single package. I have, we've spent, I don't know how many hours, just going through each and every single package, each and every single line item, and every single one, it's like, okay, do we foresee any, or are we accounting for everything within this package? I don't think that we're going to have, I'm going to come to you with a change order to increase Phase III at all. So, just because, because we have been extremely diligent in making sure that all of the costs associated to Phase III, we're going to be able to cover it within the $19 million construction budget.
Any other questions from the board?
Move approval of change order one.
Second. We have change order one, 100 percent construction documents for Phase III, and I'd also like to vote on the guaranteed maximum price for Phase III, all keeping in mind that the total GMP for the project stays at $19 million and does not go over that amount.
Mr. Chair, I would have one change, the guaranteed maximum price of everything is 25 million, but the guaranteed maximum price of $19 million is for construction.
Correct.
Okay, as long as-
Thank you for the clarification. There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you very much. We also have, under Administrative Matters, Section 2B, the change in the spot survey as you see in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And finally, today, we come to our consent agenda. As per the usual, I'd like to take these together.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the entire consent agenda.
Second.
A first and a second. Any discussion on any of these items? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. And that brings us to our president's report.
Well, thank you for everything you guys did this morning. This has been a great meeting. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Council of Presidents' meeting in Orlando, and there, we thought we would be talking about the strategy for the, working with Tallahassee, but we had to postpone that. But we did have a good conversation about our focus as a college system, and where we're going for the upcoming year and the strategies there. As mentioned before, SPC has already put their strategy in place for our local delegation, and we will be hosting our delegates on the 18th of December at the Seminole campus. This is during our winter break, but yours truly will be there and at the podium to share the needs that SPC has, and also to make sure that we're good hosts to our legislative delegates here in Pinellas County. Next month is our board workshop, and so, we'll be bringing an update, I think I'd like to send it to you prior to the board meeting, of what we have accomplished so far in our three-year strategic plan, and where we are with that. And then, going forward, I think I heard Trustee Gibbons' idea of the discussion for the workshop, and I had planned on meeting with you, Chair Stone Safer, to talk about the workshop itself, to make sure that it's on point.
Absolutely.
So you and I, maybe we could meet sometime this week to do that, and then that will be the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting is December 11 at the Epicenter. As Dr. Williams just stated, that will be our strategic planning workshop, and with that-
From nine to noon or something like that.
From nine to noonish.
You can talk about how long you want to do that.
Exactly. And with that, we adjourn this meeting. Thank you for being here.
All right.